Hello and good evening. It is six o'clock and we're on time today. So excited that we can get started without any technical glitches so far. So we'll keep going here at this point, but I want to welcome everybody to our August 11th, 2020 City Council meeting, and I will call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
Republic, for which it stands.
As one nation, under God.
Under God.
Invisible.
Liberty, justice, liberty.
Thank you. Ms. Huffman, roll call please.
Mayor Ortega.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
All seven members virtually present.
All right, great. We'll get right into it then. We are on item number four, presentations. Oh wait, I always forget to do this and we have some newer people I've noticed. So Paul, do you want to go ahead and go through the particulars about Republic who need to navigate the system?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting. If you're attending via the GoToWebinar interface, you'll see that there's a toolbar with four buttons on it. If all you see are the four buttons, you can expand it out to show the entire toolbar by pressing on the orange arrow to open it up. When you connect, all your microphones are muted and there are two ways you can communicate with City Council. One would be to raise your hand virtually by clicking the hand button on your vertical menu bar. The other would be to type a question into the question pane in the attendee interface. If you're not connected to the web presentation and are only connected by telephone, you will not be able to raise your hand or ask a question. To raise your hand, click on the hand button on your vertical attendee menu bar. When your hand is raised, the arrow will turn from green to red. And when that happens, a member of the staff will call on you by the name you registered and will unmute you for your question. To ask a question, go to the question pane in the toolbar and type your question to council and staff members and a staff member will read your question out loud and direct it to the appropriate party. If the question pane is not visible, click the orange arrow to open the attendee pane. All right, thank you very much. Back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Paul, for doing that. And just so everyone knows, as far as attendees who are visiting us tonight, I'm keeping a track of everyone's hands is on here as well as Paul will be on the background. And so in case I miss it, they've usually been texting me to let me know that someone has a question or something. And so we'll get to you as quickly as we can. If I miss you, I apologize. We'll make sure to get everyone in as we can. So we'll go ahead and move forward. Item 4A, presentations, we have none tonight. Item 4B, board commission and committee appointments. We'll start with appointment of members to the Park Advisory Board. So I'll let Ms. Huffman go from here.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Our Park and Recreation Advisory Board currently has two regular positions and two alternate positions on the board available. City Clerk's Office did publish these vacancies in our local newspaper. We did receive three applications from Ms. Heather Wilmouth, Mr. Shane Kinkinon, and Ms. Patricia Heath. I believe Ms. Wilmouth is on, listening to this broadcast currently. It looks like she has her hand up. Each of these positions to be filled tonight, one is for a four-year term to expire March of 2023. Another one is a four-year term to expire May of 2023. And the last position will be for an alternate position for a four-year term. I did have an opportunity to speak with Ms. Patricia Heath and Mr. Shane Kinkinon. But Mayor, if you would like to speak with Ms. Wilmouth, I believe she has her hand up.
Yeah, she is there, so I will. It looks like she's not muted. So I don't know if you're able to talk, Ms. Wilmouth? If not, her chat box is open. Okay, it says she has no audio. And Paul, she doesn't even have a mic on her, a mic symbol.
Yes, looking like the software is not recognizing your microphone.
Okay. Okay, so Ms. Wilmouth, I'm hoping you can hear that. So it's just like everyone else has that little microphone and you don't on yours for some reason. So if you'd like to briefly, just type something in the chat box, we can go that way. And then I will, we do have information from others that aren't in attendance that if Ms. Huffman would like to go through those first to give her time to type anything in.
Absolutely. I will give a quick recap of the conversations that I had with Ms. Patricia Heath. She did indicate one of the reasons she's interested in this position is that she actually has a child who has special needs and she's very familiar of the needs and desires of that community within our parks. Mr. Shane McKinnon stated that he's actually been involved in several youth organizations. He has been a resident of El Paso County and just recently moved to Fountain within the last three or four years and anticipates retiring and spending the rest of his time here with his family. That's in summary that I have from the other two applicants.
Okay, and Paul, it looks like she has a microphone now that's muted and I've tried unmuting it and it, oh, it says she's self-muted. So if you can go ahead and unmute yourself there. And you may go ahead and start talking. Okay, and it's not. At this point, so I don't know what we should do at this point because it's lit green. It looks like she's talking, but I can't hear anything. I don't know if anybody else can.
I don't hear at this time, but Mayor, if you'd like, I can verbally give Ms. Wilmouth my email address. And she can possibly email me during the meeting as we proceed. And then maybe I can interrupt a little bit later and see if I can relay that information.
Okay, yeah, because you know, she made the effort to get online and I don't want to not let her speak. So if it's okay with the council, we'll push this one off for a few minutes and let her get an opportunity to either figure the mic out or she can type something out real fast and then we can get that read into the record if everybody's okay with that.
Yes.
Okay, great. So we're going to go ahead and move on. And so Ms. Wilmouth, we'll get you figured out here so we can make sure you get a chance to speak. So we'll move on to our next item, which is Planning Commission Appointment. So Ms. Martinez.
Thank you. Kristi Martinez, Planning Supervisor. The Planning Commission currently has one vacancy from a recent resignation of a regular board member. The vacancy will fulfill the vacated term, which is set to expire in April of 2023. The appointed member will serve the remaining portion of that time on that term. Vacancy notices were published in the local newspaper for three consecutive weeks and were also advertised on the digital boards throughout the community and on social media. Through those efforts, we received two applications, one from a Taylor LeBlanc and a second one from an Angela Hackett Larson. Taylor LeBlanc is a veteran of the military and has been a resident of Fountain for six years. And Angela Hackett Larson is the Chief Program Officer for TESA and has been a resident of Fountain for eight years. They were both invited to this meeting. I'm not sure if they were able to log in through the public forum. Sylvia, can you see if they are in attendance?
Yeah, they're both here actually. So I will go ahead and we'll unmute. We'll start with Ms. Hackett Larson. I'm going to see, hold on one second because. Okay, it says attendee can't be unmuted until they enter their PIN. Click to send their PIN. So I'm sending a PIN to you, Ms. Larson, to see.
Can I ask a question to Kristi really quick while you're doing that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Kristi, we normally have alternates on this board?
We currently have two alternates on the Planning Commission, which does allow for the two alternates, which have already been fulfilled.
Okay, all right. I think that answers my question. I was hoping there might be a vacancy and an alternate also. So, okay. All right.
And Mayor, she's on via telephone. So she'll have to key in a touch tone sequence to unmute her phone.
Okay, and I think she's trying. I just got a message says she entered in when she dialed and then, thanks. And so I don't. This is a difficult part about virtual meetings and ensuring everyone can talk. So. So what it's asking Ms. Larson is for you just to put that PIN in. I don't know where to put it in. I've also entered the PIN a second time and it's not working, so.
Yeah, Mayor, she'll have to enter that via the touch tone keypad on her telephone.
Yeah, I think she just did.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not working, so. Yeah, it says she has used that, so I don't know. Again, at this point, this is frustrating. Is there a workaround on that, Paul, or is it just for some reason it's not working? I don't.
Unfortunately, no workaround unless she is able to connect via the client on a computer and use a microphone and speakers. That would be about the only way we could do it.
Could they?
Looks like, looks like she just came up.
Phone number and she.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Oh, yeah, there you are.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. And so the way we normally do this in a real session is, or in-person session, is we just have the person come up and just kind of give us kind of a little bit real quick about who you are and why you want to serve. And if there's any questions from the council, we'll sure ask those. But just want to give you an opportunity to kind of just tell us why you want to serve on the Planning Commission.
Great, thank you. So I've been in this community in El Paso County for about 30 years. I purchased a home here in Fountain in 2012. And I just really like this community a lot. I love Colorado itself. My family's had tickets to the Broncos for a long time. I have tickets to Colorado College. And I've kind of laid my roots here and done my work in nonprofit work for the last 10 years. And through that, I've sat on a variety of different boards. So I sat on the Pike's Peak Continuum of Care in Colorado Springs, which really was, you know, just quickly about that board, that particular board receives the funding from HUD, the state money that's pushed down to El Paso County, and then is responsible for disseminating out who that funding goes to. So the nonprofit agencies in town, so that was about 2.1 million that we dispersed out within Colorado Springs. I also have sat on the board for the Rocky Mountain Community Land Trust, which is a great first-time homebuyer program in El Paso County, and then also on the Board of Violence Free Colorado, which was previously CCATV. So I have a lot of experience there. I'm specifically interested in the strategic priorities that the city has put together. I think transportation infrastructure here in town is a huge opportunity and something that should be looked at that I like to have some, you know, conversation or just some involvement in. And then around the improvement of the availability of venues. I think that's certainly an opportunity considering the size that Fountain is becoming and the amount of growth that we've had over the years. I know there's a small, just a small, over off 85, 87, a little like venue where you, a conference center. You know, I think there's some opportunity to kind of enhance that and just look at, you know, kind of buildings, you know, a lot of the growth south and then also east of here, what opportunities are available. So I, you know, I just would like to bring my experience that I've had on some boards into the city of Fountain. Like I said, I've laid some roots here and I've been here about eight years. And I just want to continue to be involved in public service work and contribute to a community that I really enjoy. And I'd like to be a part of this opportunity. So, thank you.
I'm muted now, so I'm sorry. Okay, thank you for that. I'm going to check to see if there's any questions from council for yourself at this point. And I don't see any lights on, so just hold on real quick and I'm going to mute you for a second. And I'm going to, Mr. LeBlanc I saw is on, I will unmute him. And it says he's self-muted, so if you'd like to speak. And there you are.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we're good.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor. Taylor LeBlanc, I retired out of the Army about three years ago and I found myself with a whole lot of time and desire to continue to give back to my community. I've lived in the community continuously for six years and in the area for 10 that I've been stationed and then retired as well. So I spent my last about eight years in the Army here. But the only real planning experience that I have, I got fortunate enough to help the Army build basically small cities, the Fort Operating Bases and logistics hubs and things like that in Afghanistan. It just fascinated me. And I do see how that we are growing and I know that can be chaotic. And I definitely don't bring as much experience as our other candidate. But I do, I do, I'm very interested in seeing how we can grow Fountain effectively and efficiently because it's, I don't, I don't like chaos and I think a good planning commission can control that. But let businesses thrive and wonderful communities thrive simultaneously. And that's really what I've got to offer.
All right, thank you for that. And he put himself back on mute. And let me check to see if there's any questions for either candidate from the council. And again, we have one opening currently for the Planning Commission that we're filling. And it is to expire in April of 2023. So it looks like we have no questions, so I will leave it up to council to make a nomination for the Planning Commission. Okay, is. Okay, Mr. Applegate, your light's on.
Yeah, did Mr. LeBlanc, did he say he had experience working with area planning and stuff when he was in the military?
Yes, sir. Part of my responsibility when I did planning when I was in Afghanistan is they would send me out and I would build Fort Operating Bases, which in essence, they're not cities, but we have to plan where workplaces are, where living quarters are, sewer and other facilities for the soldiers that were there. And we took one, for instance, our biggest project, we took one base that was about an acre. And in eight months, we built it on the 350 acres with sewer lines, laundromats, entertainment areas, offices, of course, things like that, to include helicopter pads and things like that. So some of it's not directly related, but that was the experience that I gathered over there.
All right. Seems like Mr. LeBlanc has some background. I'd like to nominate Mr. LeBlanc for the position.
Okay. We have a nomination. For Mr. Applegate, anybody else? Mr. Geek?
I'll second that nomination.
Okay, so we have a nomination and second for Mr. LeBlanc. Any further discussion? Okay, with that, I will have Ms. Huffman do the call.
Thank you. Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Before I vote, I would just like to state thank you to both of them for applying. It's always hard to make a choice when you have very qualified candidates and there's not enough positions for all of them. I would encourage Angela to continue to apply because I think you have fantastic credentials. And I thank you for applying. And I am going to go ahead and vote no from, I'm sorry, yes, for Mr. LeBlanc with the appreciation of both of them applying and hope to see Angela on this board later date or maybe a different board.
Thank you. Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, and again, as Ms. Thompson stated, just, you know, we encourage people to be a part of the process all the time. So just keep an eye out. And these things really go in waves. We'll have a few weeks to months where we don't have any openings and all of a sudden the floodgates open and we have a lot of openings. So just keep an eye out in the paper and things like that and see when those openings occur and get your name in. And we do appreciate that both of you volunteering to put yourself on this commission. So what we'll do at this point is we're going to go back to, real quick, to see if Ms. Wilmouth's is working. So I'm going to unmute her. And if not, did Ms. Huffman, did you get anything from her?
Mayor, I did receive an email from her and.
So she hasn't. I'm sorry. Yeah, I can. There you go.
It's a Verizon commercial.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I didn't hear anything for the first, I guess, maybe five minutes of what was going on. I actually had to download the app onto my phone to get to hear everything.
Okay, so what we're doing now is we're just, we're going through the candidates for the Park Advisory Board, which you applied for, and you're the only one that were able to get on out of the three applicants for that. We have two normal seats and an alternate seat for that position. And just want to give you an opportunity to tell us about yourself, a brief opportunity to tell us about yourself and why you'd like to be on the Park Advisory Board.
Yes, so I've lived El Paso, I've lived in El Paso County for about 20 years now. I originally was from California, so transplant, I love it here. Been part of the city of Fountain for five years now, have three boys, ages 17 to 8. So they basically can take care of themselves now, so I'm ready to go out and do this type of stuff, community work. My husband works for the Fountain Fort Carson School District 8. He's been with them for over 10 years now. I actually worked a little bit with School District 8 as well. Right now, I work with Waste Connections. And one of the biggest reasons why I love working for Waste Connections is a lot of the community programs that we do do during Christmas time, during Thanksgiving, we do reach out to a lot of the families with the school districts, District 3, District 2, 11, 8. We donate food for the families in need. We'll adopt families, you know, buy gifts, things like that. So I love being part of something that does give back to our community. I feel like that's where I really find a passion for myself. I do sit on a lot of the safety board committees at work too, if there's ever accidents at work, things like that. We'll go through a review, see if it was preventable, non-preventable, things like that. So I just enjoy giving back to the community wherever I can. Like I said, that's why I love working with Waste Connections because we give back a lot to the community. So it's a little bit about me.
All right, thank you for finally, I'm glad we were able to get to work out, so you got to say something.
Yeah, me too.
So I appreciate the patience and sticking with it. So council, we've heard from Ms. Wilmouth and then the kind of the brief summaries that were provided by the other two folks. And again, it looks like we can get all three appointed to seats. Again, we have two permanent seats and then one alternate seat we need to appoint to. So I will open it up to council to make a recommendation. Ms. Thompson?
Are we making a motion, one seat at a time or a whole slate, or what would you like us to do?
I think if it's okay, we can, I think we can do one motion and just kind of specify because we have one that ends, I just went back to the other page. Okay, I have one that ends March of 2023. The other one is May of 2023, and then the alternate. So if we like, we could say this person for March, this person for May, and this person for alternate, if that's okay with our attorney and Ms. Huffman.
Kate, I have a question for Ms. Wilmouth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I saw your application here and it says you're a diesel mechanic?
Yeah, so I actually went to Pike's Peak Community College. I got my automotive and diesel degree. So I started off doing mechanics, but then I worked my way up into the office at Waste Connection. So now I do a lot of their accounts receivable, receivable accounts payable. I'm part of their lead board and stuff like that. So, yeah, I do miss mechanics though.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Well, I.
Okay, Ms. Thompson, go ahead.
Okay, for the first term that ends in March, I would like to nominate, I wrote down the last name is Heath. I'm sorry, I didn't see this. Patricia Heath. The second term that ends in, there's too much paperwork here.
May.
May, thank you. Heather Wilmouth, and then the alternate Shane. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion for the March 5th, 2023 expiration term to Ms. Heath, the one for May 3rd of the same year to Ms. Wilmouth, and then Mr. Kinkinon to the alternate position. And so that would be the motion. And Mayor Pro Tim, you're.
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and second for that. If there's no further discussion, we'll let Mrs. Huffman do the call.
Thank you. Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you to those who, again, have volunteered their time and their talents to the city. Staff will be getting to you soon to kind of start you in the process and kind of orientating yourself to everything that goes on with those boards. We do appreciate all that. It takes a lot of work and a lot of commitment. And it's people like those who volunteer for anything that really help organizations do well and be successful. So thank you to that for everyone. And again, for anybody who's listening, we often have seats available on our different commissions and boards and just keep an eye out and see what is available. And please apply. And these ones are easy because you don't have to go through the rigmarole. You just fill out an application and talk a few minutes and more likely you can get onto a position. So we are, again, very thankful for that. So we are going to go ahead and keep moving forward. We are on item number five, City Council at General Request and Announcements. I'm going to go ahead and start with Ms. Duncan. Anything tonight?
Good afternoon. Again, I just want to state that our applications for our youth council are available on a fillable form. If you go to the Fountain webpage, you'll be able to fill out the form there. We have a lot of interest, a lot of families calling in the community. So I appreciate the interest and excited to get started next month.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Geek, anything?
Yes, I don't know whether Chief Heber is on tonight or not, but I would like to thank him for the diligent work that he did for the traffic issue that seems to be up in Medicine Bow. I just wanted to thank him.
Okay. Thank you for that. Yeah, it's been, I don't know, it's one of those things, again, we go in waves. We got Ms. Thompson and I got an email. We got Ms. Thompson and I got an email last week about speeding and then I got another email from the paper. And, and you know, I guess my message to the public is, you know, in dealing with speeding, you know, we wish we could have a, well, most of us wish we could have a cop on every street corner and there to police these types of things. But the reality is it's just, it's not possible and something that is also unrealistic. So we have a traffic team that is out and they circulate throughout the city on a very regular basis. And they try to hit the key areas and the other thing they do is look at traffic stats and, and, and keep track of those types of things as, you know, accidents and, and previous speeding and those types of things occur. And they try to really focus on those more often than the other areas. But you know, there are times when, when you have people that feel like, well, I haven't seen a cop here for a while. I'm going to go ahead and do what I need to do and get into where I need to get there as quickly as I can. So you know, we, we work tirelessly to do that and along with everything else that the PD does, we, we do appreciate all those efforts. But again, for everybody, if you have comments or questions around those types of things, please don't hesitate to call the police department and, and they'll be able to, you know, give you the information and go through those stats with you as well. So thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Geek.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, just one thing. I drove by over there on Allegra just to see how things were going. I ran into the foreman of the crew over there and I watched them work. They have a pretty good crew and they're moving right along now. It's, it's under a different group. And I asked him what the timetable was maybe to move those K rails and get that intersection open up there right on 85. And he said he could have done it either yesterday or today. He said he's just waiting on traffic control with his company to come and go ahead and open that. So that may be happening real soon, or maybe it is. I haven't been up there today, so maybe it did.
Okay, great. Thanks for checking on that. Yeah, that's been kind of a concern there, but I think that's out of our hands anyway, but thanks for checking on that. Anything else?
Hey Mayor?
No.
This is Todd. Hey Mayor?
Oh, yeah.
If I could just, if I could just comment on Mr. Applegate's discussion. I really want to thank several members of the community down there in that Allegra neighborhood. They've helped us with, I don't know if I'd call it putting pressure on the Army Corps of Engineers down there. And Richard was part of that, his son was part of that, Sharon helped us. And it really does help when we all bring that communication together. And I reached out to them last week, but then also forwarded that to them. They also made comments. So it kind of goes towards what your comment was on the speeding. It's, it's much, much better when we all work together to try to solve those. So that's just a good, we really don't have say so, as you just said on that project. But we really were hitting wide field water, the Army Corps of Engineers, and it really did help with everybody coming together. So I think it just emphasizes what you said. Let us know, we'll keep working on them and we'll bring everybody together. So I appreciate Councilman Applegate and Councilwoman Thompson's help with that.
All right, yep, thanks a lot. Okay, Ms. Estes?
Have to get myself unmuted. I just have one thing. In August this year, we're celebrating the 100th anniversary of women's suffrage. It passed the 19th Amendment, passed ratification on August 18th, 1920, when Tennessee ratified the 19th Amendment. And in recognition of that, communities around the United States are going to commemorate it by lighting up their public buildings with purple and gold lights. And our city hall will be lit up with purple and gold on August 26th, which is International Women's Equality Day in commemoration of that. And I just want to thank everybody that made that possible. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay, great. Thanks for doing that. And if I can take a second just to brag a little bit. So pre-COVID, when they were going to do the St. Patrick's Day Parade, my wife was called and asked to be a, one of the grand marshals. And I say one of the grand marshals because they were going to have 100 women from across the, I'm assuming the city and, and the City Fountain and kind of the county, they were asking a bunch of different women to come out. They were all going to dress in white as they did back 100 years ago and, and what they were doing and trying to pass that. And, and they were all going to wear the sash and everything and be a part of that grand marshal thing. And of course, COVID came and it kind of wiped that out. And so apparently they're still trying to do a parade here soon and they're going to do that. But about three weekends ago, they did a reenactment of a photo over at Garden of the Gods Park, where they all showed up and they were all wearing white and had the sashes on and everything and took a pretty cool picture. And I don't know where that's going to get published or printed, but they even did the picture with the masks on so that, you know, in another hundred years, they could, you know, show that picture of, of what had happened over the course of that 100 years and, and where we were that day, or of course, two, three weeks ago, and, and show the people, hopefully in another 100 years, what, what we were going through then and commemorating something, you know, that way. But just to brag a little bit on, on my wife, but that was, it was a cool thing. And I do want to also mention that our own Brandy Williams was also one of those that was standing there. And so it was nice to, to see Fountain represented in that way. But thanks, Ms. Estes, in keeping us in tune with that and I'm looking forward to driving by on the 26th to see the lights.
And the picture is out on that. I have several friends that participated in that and I've seen the picture on Facebook all over.
Oh, okay.
It's a really cool picture. So congratulations to your wife and Brandy for participating in that. Good job.
Okay, great. Thanks. That's awesome. Okay, Mayor Protem?
For the first time since April, I am not going to say a single thing about the creek or the creek project. But I do want to mention, coming up at the, in the September, October timeframe, is the Creek Week event, the annual Creek Week event. I've got some information from Allison Shook, who is the Communications Outreach Director, so to speak. And Allison is, because of the COVID situation, they are not looking for cities to do the typical proclamation that they've had us do in the past, but she's going to give me some materials that we can put on the city website and Facebook and whatnot to promote the Creek Week event. They're still wanting to hold that with all the proper safety and social distancing precautions. And all the sponsors who were around last year are still on board to support that event this year to do a big creek, a big creek cleanup as we've done in the past. And she's even expanded the Brew Shed Alliance even a little further than normal. So that's a way to kind of partner up with some of the local microbrews and support a cleaner Fountain Creek while supporting the microbrew at the same time. So I'll get some information to the folks who are responsible for updating the website so we can get that on. And otherwise, I've got not a single thing about the creek except to say, Brandy and I and Todd are working kind of behind the scenes with some folks from Colorado Springs Utilities to bring us a little bit closer to that becoming a tangible project in the, in the area. So that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, PPCG, we're having virtual meetings. We're working two years since we wrote our first ever strategic plan there. So first time in 50 years, two years ago already. So we're going section by section this month and just kind of tweaking it, making some changes and different things as you do to those plans and see what you've accomplished and what needs to be changed a little bit. And then I had a meeting with several staff members about making some tweaks to the, the Military Banner Appreciation Program. So we'll probably be bringing those to you guys next meeting. And believe it or not, we've had some meetings with some other same staff members working on trunk or treat. So seeing what we're going to do to make some changes there. Not ready to release anything yet, but I think it's going to be pretty exciting. You know, obviously events as we go on are going to have to be different. But I, I think we've got some exciting ideas and I look forward to working with staff to get those fleshed out.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I have tonight is I would like to, if you would all indulge me for a moment of silence. We lost a, he's a former mayor of Wilden Park, a mayor Neil Levy. He just ended his last term this past April and I got to know him over the last few years and a lot of the things that we did as, as mayors and working together. But up in Wilden Park, he did a really good job of really unifying the community up there. He was a, a super nice person and I got to opportunity to meet his wife and, and they were just really good people. And, and his, he, he, his heart was truly for the community of Wilden Park and the things that he did. And, and, and working with him along with the other mayors and trying to move this entire region forward. He was an integral piece and, and you know, he was about collegiality, working together and cooperation. So if it's okay with you all, I would like to take a few moments of silence. We just, they just had his memorial service this past Sunday. He ended up passing away with cancer, but it was very aggressive. And I think he, from the time he was initially diagnosed to, to the time he passes, it's just a little over six months. So unfortunately, if you, if you didn't get a chance to meet him, that's, that's too bad. But you may also know him as the owner of the Swiss Chalet and the Pepper Tree in the Carls Springs area. So just a really good overall, nice guy who loved baseball. So we're going to take a quick moment of silence for him. Okay, thank you for that. We're going to go ahead and move on to our public to be heard item. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. We ask that you sign up with the serial clerk prior to the meeting and council may not be able to provide me an answer, but would direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others attends, we ask that you limit your comments of three minutes or less. And I don't see any hands up. I think I just. Ms. Huffman, did we get any emails or anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, so we will go ahead and move forward. Item number seven is our consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are to be considered be routine, will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member, citizen, so requests, which case item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I did get an email today. I don't know if someone wanted to talk about that, but I think we were going to pull item seven B.
Mayor, this is Dan Blankenship. I can address that if you'd like.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, this is, this is an item to do the programming and controls for the booster pump station at the new joint utilities operations facility. And after we had prepared it and submitted it into the packet, we came to the realization that when the council increased the city manager's spending authorization earlier this spring, that this particular item falls within that authorization. So he, he is authorized to, to approve this administratively. So it does not require council action, so we can, we can pull it from, from the agenda if that is the council's pleasure. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of the council members may have about the item if there are any.
Okay, okay. And other than that, we have approval of our city council meeting minutes from July 28th. So I will leave it up to council. A lot of, all of a sudden everyone's mics came on, so I'm just going to go at the top. Ms. Duncan?
Is it time for the make to motion?
Yeah, if you'd like.
Okay, I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, and then do a motion for approval, Mr. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. I'm assuming it's, so this is a little weird since we didn't really make Troy, or can we just go ahead? Or Sylvia?
Actually, Mayor, my preference is to make a motion to table item seven B and then another motion to approve the consent agenda with the minute.
Okay, and so I don't even think we're tabling it, they're just pulling it from the, from the agenda altogether. So, so let's back up and we'll need a motion to pull item seven B. If everyone will be okay with that. So Ms. Duncan?
I make a motion that we pull item seven B from the consent agenda.
Okay, and Mr. Applegate?
Was that the motion?
Yeah.
Or do we need another one?
The other one's been tabled.
Yeah, so we're motioning, that was a motion just to pull seven B off the agenda.
Okay, second that.
Okay, so Ms. Huffman, go ahead with the call.
Thank you. Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, and now we need to do a motion just to approve our consent agenda, item seven A. Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, I moved that we we approve consent agenda with, with A.
Okay. And Ms. Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to second for our consent agenda, item seven A. Ms. Huffman, sorry.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, great. We'll go ahead and move on to item number eight, old business. We have no items tonight, so we'll go to item nine, new business, item nine A. There was nothing removed for discussion. We will move on to item nine B, resolution. Let me pull it up here, sorry. Resolution number two zero dash zero six one, review and adoption of a resolution amending the City of Fountain Strategic Plan 2019 to 2021. Mr. Trader?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Wanted to share with you the resolution amending the City of Fountain Strategic Plan. As the council knows, we adopted our originals, well, not the original, but we adopted our current strategic plan back at the beginning of 2019, and that's a three-year plan. We have, every six months, we have a strategic plan review with the council. At our mid-year review this year, the council, that was back in July, the council discussed several modifications to that plan and amendment. So what you have before you with this resolution is, are some modifications to our existing strategic plan. So let me go through those just briefly real quick. The first two really are in the telecommunications piece, and that's TT number six. And that recommendation, that modification would be to have our utility director finalize negotiations with a strategic partner in order to facilitate provision of high-speed, basically broadband of the Fountain community. As we move forward with our strategic plan, the council discussed the various items that were achieved and wanted to continue with the direction we're heading with telecom. The second related one is that the director would provide an update briefing to the council and the public no later than November 2021. And so you can see those, by the way, these are all in that resolution as well, as well as your agenda item. The public safety item, PS three, that is to, and the council discussed this as well, to propose and provide a proposal to the city council regarding a co-responder model with the police department whereby we would bring in a mental health expert to assist on some of the calls that our police officers go to that really need someone who has an expertise in, in mental health. And so Chief Heber discussed county beacon teams and he also discussed the Carls Springs team. I can't remember if they had a name or not. But we want to basically emulate the beacon team model. But we want to basically emulate the beacon team model. That is a partnership through. Oh. UC Health, by the way. So we would partner with them and Chris is working on Chief Heber is working on a proposal. But this this. Item would add that as a as a part of our strategic plan as well. And then down on recreation, as you know, with COVID, that's put a major delay in our recreation facility plans. And so that RF three that was existing, our strategic plan basically anticipated. Bringing something to the community this year to have them vote on on a. Mill levy of some sort or some sort of formation of a of a recreation district or something along those lines that would. Build a recreation facility. Well, with COVID. The City Fountain got together with Whitefield and decided this is not a good time to. Be going to our voters with the economic impacts going on in our community right now to go to voters and. And ask them to pony up funds for a rec facility. So essentially this RF four that's in here. Sets a new kind of resets. It sets a new timeline that a recreation director would would move forward in in trying to push that towards fruition. So that is an overview of the of the amendments to the strategic plan and we adopt these by resolution. So that's why. You have this resolution twenty dash zero six one in front of you. The last thing there and and you can see that they just got pulled up on your. On the PowerPoint slides is just a reminder. I know John Trilch went through this before in our midyear review. That is just a reminder of the timeline that we'll be going through. So this next year will begin the planning stages for. Our next strategic plan timeframe. So. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Scott. I'm going to look at council here and it looks like we have a couple of questions. I'm going to start with Mr. Applegate.
Yeah, I was wondering Scott on the TT six and seven. Twenty twenty one, it's going to take sixteen months just to give us a report. Am I, is that correct?
Well, it's it's not just giving you a report. It's actually going through. See, they they have to negotiate an agreement and. Dan can jump on here if he has any more details, but they need to negotiate a well, go through the whole process of negotiating. A public private partnership. And so there's actually quite a bit of discussion that has to happen relative to that. Before we can bring something to the city council. But yeah, that's the timeframe they're proposing right now.
Well, we had discussed, I thought, trying to get ahead of October twenty twenty one. Because of the fact that the council would be more than half new.
These are the dates that the council discussed in that council retreat. If the council wants us to. To modify that, then just give us that direction.
Okay, I thought we had discussed getting ahead of that. That last period of twenty twenty one.
Well, Mayor. Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, Scott. This is Dan Blankenship and and Councilmember Applegate. Yeah, yes, we did. We we did discuss that. We set that. In our in that discussion as a as our target date with our anticipation that we would be come in in advance of that date.
Councilmember Applegate, this is John Trilch as well. Originally in the discussion that date was set at December of twenty twenty one. And during the discussion, it was moved back to October so that it would better synchronize with the election. And would capture the full progress of that plan and partnership right at that time before the election period.
This is only a progress report. Right?
Item item TT six is actually coming forward with an agreement.
Oh, oh, there will be an agreement to vote on.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what. All right, it looks like an information on P three here according to what they packet gave. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Geek?
Yes, I was. Privileged to see that beacon plan that the county uses in action about a week and a half ago. And that was pretty impressive. So if we can get that done, that's that's a going to be a help to a lot of people.
Okay, yeah, I think, you know, with with where the country is going right now in regards to police. And policing, you know, a lot of those things that are that are being thrown out and suggested, you know. Luckily, we we've been kind of on the forefront of those things, but that's one I think that. Has really been a part of that discussion as well. And, you know, we we send our cops out to go deal with the situation and. And oftentimes they're trying to wear, you know. Three, four, five, ten different hats while they're trying to respond to an incident and. And being able to bring an expert in on on a situation that that can really help deescalate, you know. Something along those lines, I think, would really help. Not only the police, but it will help the the people involved in that incident and. And hopefully getting a a solution that's not going to end up bad. And so, you know. It's always the goal, at least for our police department. To to get situations. Knocked down as quickly as possible, but at the same time, they they're trying to be respectful. They're trying to, you know, get the the. The major part of whatever is going on, that disagreement or whatever it is. You know, I don't the subdued is the wrong word, but I'm trying to think of the right word to use. You know, get it eased so that we can, you know, this step back in the middle of everything, take a deep breath. And then then be able to move forward respectfully for everybody the best you can in whatever situation it is. I think bringing that person in. To help with that and who's going to have that expertise and and be on the the sidelines right there, you know. I think is is a key thing, and I think it will be very important for us. To be able to do that. And like you said, Mr. Geek, it's really been working in other communities. So.
Well, I saw three, three. There were three officers and then the mental health person. And it was amazing how quickly that got fixed. And the person got taken care of without a whole lot of effort from a whole lot of people.
Yeah, and that that I think that's the that's the big ask of everybody right now is is. How do we escalate a situation? That's the word I was looking for. Sorry about subdued. It's the escalate a situation. That's going to be with a as positive outcome as possible and as respectful to everybody as possible. So. It's really hard. And you know what? For our our men and women who are responding to these calls. It's scary for them, you know, they're they're going in and not knowing what's what's happened, you know, prior to them being called. This is it's a very scary situation and. And they have as much training as we can get them. But you know, those types of things is going to be very helpful, having that extra person.
If I could add something to that, Mr. Mayor, I know Chief Heber is actually getting some data from UC Health and the existing beacon program. Because there's actually, in addition to the help, it actually saves a lot of our our own time and equipment and expenses and. There's some efficiencies that you gain from this as well. So he he's up pulling that information together and not only how it impacts. Our police officers, but also the firefighters. Because there's a lot of issues that they walk into that they could use a mental health professional to assist them as well. So. He will be, I know he's already working on pulling that data together for the council, but. That's exactly what this will be. And I think there it's kind of an exciting time to be looking at doing, making a significant change like that.
Yeah, yeah, very much so. And now will this person also be available for? Our staff or is it just for the 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 people involved in the incident?
Yeah, that that's a great question. That's something that came up in our council discussion around this. So Chris spent some time with the UC Health folks on this and discussing that issue. And because of the liability issues and and the very specific nature of the expertise. That these mental health, I don't know what the title is, but the mental health professionals deal with, they really aren't. Equipped to deal with your your normal employee mental health issues. And we have some EAP programs to help with that. That are specialists in that. But yeah, they're very focused more on the, I'm not going to use the right word, but more more of the. I don't know, the traumatic sort of issues that are happening in public safety.
Okay, yeah, and and again, for public and for others, we do have and. People that are available for our police, for our firemen, for when there's an incident they have to respond to that. That there's they're going to be able to go talk to someone after and 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 help them with with whatever. You know, reactions they may start dealing with after the fact. So. We do have that available. So any other questions on on this item? Okay, I am seeing, oh, Mr. Applegate?
No, I was just muting.
Okay, well, I it sounds like, you know, we're at a good point here. As Mr. Applegate said earlier, we are. And we're going to start working on our next strategic priorities. Probably after the first of the year and just moving forward and and doing that. So we're going to really push the public to be involved in that and. As because we're, you know, we're charting the future for our city and and again, with. A new council coming on board at the end of twenty twenty one, it's going to be very important that that we have those right priorities and ready to go for that new council. So if you do have an interest to run for council, you may want to really be a part of those discussions and conversations. In the event that you do get elected, you can hit the ground running with those. So with that, I will take a motion. Mr. Applegate, your mic's on?
Yeah, I moved to adopt resolution twenty dash zero six one.
Okay, and Ms. Estes?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second, Ms. Hoffman?
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Alrighty, we will keep moving forward. Item nine C, resolution number two zero dash zero six three. A resolution amending the COVID nineteen business impact assistance program. Mr. Trainer?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm back for another item here. I I've I've always been a real, I've been excited about this program since we began it. The council approved. The Business Impact Assistance Program back in May. Using a portion of the cares dollars that the county allocated to the city and and I think it's just a very positive program. So we've got a subgroup that works out of the EDC that helps review each of the applications. And so we brought together those folks. To ask them because our time is quickly coming to an end where we have to have identified where we're going to spend these dollars. We have to have them spent by the end of December. And really by the end of September, we need to at least be able to give the county indication of where those dollars are going to be spent. So. The the group discussed how we could potentially expand. This grant program. This is a micro grant program for those who may not be aware. For small businesses in Fountain. To date, our focus, as the council knows, has been on. Small businesses with less than twenty employees and they're they're kind of your brick and mortar businesses around the community. And so. There's a list of criteria that we use to evaluate those applications. And today we've issued about three hundred and eleven thousand. Well, it's over just a little bit over three hundred and eleven thousand. Excuse me, in grants today. Well, the group is requesting that we expand the eligibility now to include nonprofit organizations. Some home based businesses, mobile vendors, commercial landlords. And other professionals who rent booth space from established businesses. You have the criteria in that resolution, but the idea is to see if we can somehow increase. The ability of some of our businesses in the community, many of which are are small home based businesses. To receive some of these funds for their impacts. And so if I can just touch base on those briefly, the application process would be very, very similar to the existing application process. We don't have a lot of staff and so we wanted to keep this as easy as possible. So we want to want to keep that application process very similar. There are a few differences, however. So if I just briefly hit on those. For our nonprofit organizations, we would allow them to apply for the specifically COVID nineteen related costs. Up to a maximum of five thousand per nonprofit. On the home based businesses, we had some discussions route that around that. And it would be to pay for COVID related costs or losses up to two thousand per employee or eight thousand maximum. As a reminder, our current plan is three thousand for a for a brick and mortar business, three thousand per employee up to fifteen thousand maximum. We got looking at the scope and scale of small businesses that are home based and. You really typically aren't going to have more than four employees anyway, but. We also, part of the discussion around that was around direct or network marketing types of businesses. And because there are so many questions about those businesses, not not about the business themselves. I know some people have a lot of success for those, but then some people just use them. To purchase. Products that they love for themselves at discounted price. We just thought that was going to be too hard for us to administer those. So those would not be eligible. It'd be expanding the program to include the mobile vendor types of businesses like food trucks or animal groomers. For their COVID related costs or losses up to two thousand per employee or eight thousand maximum. So it's basically. Treating them as just another home based business, but we just felt like it was a little bit different. So we wanted to specify those in here as well. Excuse me. And then also. It's not a huge help to commercial landlords, but to provide at least something in paying a portion of their lost rents to COVID nineteen. For up to three thousand per commercial tenant, but no more than fifteen per landlord. And then there we wanted some clarification for those professionals and I mentioned them here in the resolution such as. Hairstylist, massage therapists, et cetera, who rent booth spaces from, you know, brick and mortar types of businesses where they may exist. So. You know, you may have a hair salon that has an owner for the actual business and they could potentially apply for. These funds for their own business, but the booth rent some, excuse me, some of the hairstylists may rent their booths. And so. They wouldn't be treated as employees for the main business, but they would be treated as their own. For lack of a better term, kind of a mini business for their own booth rental. That would allow them. To apply for at least a little bit of funds as well. So. That's the request with this expansion program. And again, the hope is that we can get. These dollars out there in our community before, you know, our deadlines hit. Any questions for me at this point?
I are we good on ensuring that those who have been. Eligible, we've exhausted every. Possibility of trying to make sure that they apply. I know Lexi was, you know, calling people saying, hey, we got money, please, please come in and fill out stuff. So are we pretty comfortable with ensuring that? Those who probably needed first, I guess, has have had that opportunity.
So now we've sent out two. So we have a mailing list through our business licensing program, an email list. And so we've sent them out through that. And then we've also made a lot of phone calls and then there's a lot of word of mouth going on as well, because we'll we always find. Regardless of the the mailings that we sent out, we've had businesses who we we've talked to personally who have said. Oh, I I saw all that. I just thought it was a loan program. And so we've just had, even though everything, you know, focuses on the grant aspects of it. We've just had to make sure that we clarified that as we go, but it's just an ongoing effort.
Okay. All right, so far, let's see, Ms. Thompson?
Scott, on the D part for the commercial landlords?
Yeah.
Is that if they had a tenant already in there and either the tenant didn't pay the rent or they lost the tenant due to the. Tenant having to close their business or, I mean, they couldn't have had an empty.
Right.
Warehouse sitting there for the last six years and now all of a sudden because of COVID, they.
Right. No, that's a great. In fact, that's what our discussion was around very specifically. And the other. Challenge with that is that we might have business. In fact, we have had businesses who have applied. To pay for their back rent as well. So we're going to have to evaluate. Both the landlord application as well as the the potential business that may be leasing the space to make sure that there's not some overlap. Between what each of them are applying for. But yes, it's for specifically for those businesses who have had renters who haven't been able to pay. Maybe who went out of business and weren't able to pay. But yeah, and they've got to be able to show that. The other thing I should mention too, before I forget. Is that the other thing that we do to make sure that there's not an overlap of funding. Is we send every applicant that goes through our process that we approve and that will be true for all these as well. We also send those to the county to make sure to get their review to make sure that that they're also not awarded because they have another. A program that's county wide, that they're not also awarding funds for the essentially the same thing to these same folks. Did that answer your question, Sharon?
Yes, they they could not have had an empty space. For a year or two and receive funds because they didn't have a tenant in there already that they're now looking from. Okay.
You're right, you got it.
Okay, any other questions from anybody? You know, I think it's, you know, it's great that we have this opportunity and we can continue looking at really creative ways to to help everyone out during this time and. So I thank you definitely, Ms. Lexi, for all the hard work she's done and just helping. I know she's even brought people in. They sat down. Across the table from each other and worked through those applications. They sat down across the table from each other and, and worked through those applications to make sure we got everyone as much as possible. Um, and, uh, just the committee who has been kinda reviewing everything and doing the hard work too. So, uh, thanks to everybody for helping out with that. I, I know it's very appreciative, appreciated, um, by all those businesses that have, um, actually received some benefits. So, uh, you know, I said, not a lot, but at least we're able to help out a little bit, um, with that money that, uh, the county was able to, to forward on to us. And, and again, I think, you know, we really got lucky in, in that they were really looking out for us as well. And, you know, they could've taken a, a bigger lion's share and, and, and done whatever they wanted with it. But they, I think they were very fair and equitable in getting that money out to the, um, the municipalities and things. So, um, with that, I think we have a good idea of what, what our next steps are, and I think they sound good. So I'm gonna go ahead and let council, um, oh, let me see if there's any other questions from anybody else. I'm not seeing any. Uh, so if, uh, council, uh, Ms. Estes, do you have a question or would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I wanna make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move, I move to adopt resolution twenty dash zero six three. A resolution amending the COVID-19 Business Impact Assistance Program.
Okay, and, uh, Ms. Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. And, um, before we move further, uh, let me ask a quick question. Uh, Mayor Protem, are you on a laptop or a computer?
On my iPad.
Okay, so, um, I, I'm gonna let you and Paul know, I, for some reason, this last item, uh, I started getting a lot of feedback and a lot of weird stuff going on with the, the connection. So just in case I get, um, kicked out for whatever reason, I need to reboot back in, uh, we'll, uh, have you and Paul just kinda keep moving with the meeting and I'll jump in as quickly as I can. It seems like it, it's worked itself out, but it was just kinda weird. It was really skipping in and out. But, uh, just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware, just in case all of a sudden I'm like, you know, my, my free, uh, screen freezes and we're moving forward. So, uh, just be aware of that.
Proud of that.
Okay, all right. So we are on to item nine D. Uh, resolution two zero dash zero six four, a, it says my audio connection's been lost. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we still hear you, man.
Okay, yeah, it said it was lost, so my mic was gone. So let me go ahead and do this again. Item nine D, resolution two zero dash zero six four. A resolution to approve the purchase of a fire engine from the Darley Company, Chief Maxon.
All right, good evening, everybody. Uh, this item is for a new fire engine from the Darley Company. And just to start off, let me share with you where we are. Um, can everybody hear me okay? Is my microphone working okay?
You're good, Chief.
Yes. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Um, so where we stand right now is, is, uh, we have two trucks that really need to be replaced. Our ladder truck's been out of service, uh, for the last six weeks. And we're waiting for, uh, a gentleman to fly in from Germany because those parts are no longer made. Um, they're gonna bring parts in from Germany to completely redo the sensor system, um, which drives the ladder on top of the truck. And we hope we'll have that done in the next thirty to forty-five days. But we're waiting right now from that, for that person from Germany to come and do that repair for us. Uh, and then we have, um, an older engine fleet. Uh, and so what we are planning on doing in the big picture is ordering a new fire engine, which would be here, uh, hopefully late 2021. The build time on them right now is about fifteen to sixteen months. So if we order it here in the next few weeks, hopefully it'll be here around Thanksgiving of 2021. But in the meantime, uh, we've done a lot of really critical thinking here in the fire department. And we're fairly comfortable with going with a used ladder truck, uh, and just find one here, even if it takes six months or longer, uh, to find a used ladder truck, you know, somewhere here in the United States, um, that would serve our city for, you know, probably a good ten years or so. Um, the thing about our ladder truck is, it's just gone its lifespan, and so that's why they don't make the parts anymore. Um, the reason why, um, we're going with, uh, a new engine and a used ladder is, a new ladder truck is a little over a million dollars, uh, where we hope that we can get a used ladder truck for about six hundred thousand. And the used engine is gonna be right under six hundred thousand. So for the price of a brand-new ladder truck, hopefully eventually we're gonna be able to get the new engine and, and the used ladder truck. So that's the big picture as to what's going on. And this agenda item is in reference to the, the new fire engine. So I just wanna give you a little bit of information. Um, we currently have a nineteen ninety-nine fire engine with a hundred and thirty-six thousand miles that will be replaced by this engine, uh, the new engine. Uh, the fire engine fleet in Fountain is aging, and that I hope that this investment will help us catch up. I have authored a fire and ambulance fleet replacement plan that will help the city of Fountain with long-term capital-outlay planning. Uh, I started working on a fire, uh, fire engine design last year that would best serve the citizens of Fountain. Um, just a little bit of background, um, I have built and purchased twenty-three fire engines during my career of six different variations. Um, and when I was doing this process, I met with all of our shifts and got feedback from here in the fire department from everyone that's going to be using this fire engine. But I've also met with our mechanics at our fleet shop to make sure that this truck is something that they can, uh, continue to work on. It's in line with what they already have for, you know, commonality of parts and whatnot. And if we do approve this purchase, um, part of it is going to be, uh, free training for our mechanics on the pump and also on the foam system. So this proposal's for a twenty-twenty-one Darley fire engine with seven hundred and fifty gallons of onboard water with the fifteen-hundred gallon-per-minute pump. Uh, we, um, that's pretty much consistent with what we've been doing. Um, our last engine, which was bought, I know a few of you counselors helped with that process in twenty-seventeen. That was five hundred gallons of water. We're going with seven fifty on this one, just because on the interstate, a lot of times we are running short on water. So the seven hundred and fifty gallons of water will, will help us, uh, out there on the interstate especially. Um, this is a little bit different, cause we are going with a side-mounted pump panel, uh, which is gonna make the truck shorter. But we're gonna put that on the passenger side of the truck, so that person is standing out of traffic, so they don't get ran over. Uh, the compartments are configured very similar to our other engines. Uh, and there's also a special compartment with this truck that we haven't done before to keep dirty gear away from the firefighters to reduce their cancer risk, which is a big thing with us. Um, the compressed air foam system is a first for Fountain and will greatly help our firefighting efficiency with the fuels today, and especially with the million-gallon, uh, fuel farm that we have in South Fountain here. Um, having a really good, um, foam system is gonna really help us get those fires out quickly. Uh, and so this truck is, every, I just wanna point out that every fire engine out there is completely custom. Uh, these specifications have been used before and already engineered. And that's just one way that we save money. If you go in and completely design something from the ground up, it has to be engineered, and they have to do a lot of different tests. And so that, that really drives the cost up. And I've always compared it to, if I walked into a Ford dealer and asked for a custom F-150 pickup that was three feet longer than what they sell in the lot, they probably aren't gonna do it in the first place, but they would charge me a lot of money to engineer that truck to make sure that it's safe. Um, this engine is, is set to be built as a brand-new truck, but sold to us as a demo price. Um, what Darley has done is they've negotiated a special rate, um, with their part suppliers. Um, so they put the truck together, but the lights and the door handles and the pump, um, you know, the water tank, everything comes from suppliers. And so their suppliers and the labor have negotiated a special price for us if we nego, if we purchase this vehicle. And the company just wants to be able to use the vehicle in their advertisements. And, uh, as a result of this, we're gonna save about forty thousand dollars off the list price of this truck. Um, the Darley Company has also extended to the city of Fountain a HDAC. What that stands for is that's the Houston-Galveston Byboard. Um, I've, I've used them for about the last eleven to twelve years. And what it is, is it's a group of local governments that combined their buying power, um, kind of in lieu of going out to bid for things. So when you have all those governments that pull together to make large purchases such as fire engines, uh, it really saves us all money and a lot of time. So they are extending that HDAC, uh, price to us. Uh, I do wanna point out, the reason why we are trying to get this accomplished now is that we do know there's a scheduled three percent price increase on, on the vehicle in about thirty days, that we, we don't wanna have that happen. Um, and I do all wanna point out too, that Darley Company built our nineteen forty-one antique fire engine that we still ha, have here, uh, in Fountain that pumps today. Um, and this, this engine would mean that we have two engines that are eighty years apart. Uh, and then, as you will see in the agenda item, I've built the small contingency into the price of the truck. And that is just from my experience of being the fire truck factory, uh, numerous times. Um, when we go out for our fifty percent build point, um, there's just, there's a lot of things that you, you can't really foresee when you're specifying a truck, such as you may want shelves in a certain place or there might be something that, that you need to do. So having a small contingency, it may not be necessary, but it's nice to have that. Um, and with that, um, I stand for any question that you may have.
Okay, real quick, Scott, um, wanted to add something as well.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to add, this is another area where the CARES Act dollars actually, um, help the Fountain, help the city of Fountain quite a bit. Um, the feds have basically authorized those CARES dollars to be used to fund all of our public safety uniformed first responder salaries from March through the end of December. And so, and that's, that's regardless of if those, um, wages were already budgeted or not. So essentially what that's gonna do for us is it will allow us to take those dollars that were set aside in our budget for public safety salaries and, um, use the CARES Act dollars to pay for those. Well, what that means is that those general fund dollars we were gonna spend will now, um, remain in our fund balance. And so, um, I just, I bring that up because one of the thoughts that we had, knowing that there was, um, some serious needs when it comes to our vehicle, to our, uh, fire vehicles, is we, what we thought we would do is, um, as we work through this next budget, which we're doing now, um, we would budget to use those funds that were saved because of the CARES Act dollars. We would use those to budget towards, um, paying for this engine. So I just wanted to add that real quick. Did I, I don't know if I explained that well. I hope I did. Um, but basically CARES Act dollars paying for, uh, salaries is gonna allow us to use, um, general fund dollars to pay for this instead of the salaries. That's all I wanted to add.
It's getting us there faster than, than, uh, if we didn't have a CARES Act.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, um, uh, thanks for the presentation, uh, chief, on that. Um, uh, if this gets approved tonight, I don't know if you're aware, since you're new, uh, that anytime we get a new fire truck in, the mayor gets to drive it first around the town with the lights on. So, just so you know, uh, but, that's not...
No problem, we can arrange that.
Yeah, that's not true. I'm just joking. I don't want everyone getting all mad about it. But, um, uh, if we have, uh, council, um, questions, Ms. Thompson?
I would first like to say that I am extremely impressed with your fire department fleet assessment and replacement program plan that you, um, included in our packets. Uh, the amount of time that you've put into really studying and listening to everyone and what our city needs are, is, is extremely impressive. And I would really like our citizens to understand what an outstanding fire chief we have in this city. And, um, that you are thinking long-term for a replacement plan of the vehicles that we need for this city. And hopefully in a few years, we won't have any vehicles in the poor category. Um, on this chart that you created, um, nothing will be below fair. And I think, is that a, is that a fair assessment to hope for?
It is, absolutely. I, you know, I think we take care of these two trucks that we're talking about this evening. Um, the ladder and, and this engine here in the next, you know, if we got those accomplished here in the next eighteen months or so, um, I don't really think we're gonna be needing to purchase, um, anything, you know, fire engine-wise, um, for years to come.
But it, it, it's just very impressive how you studied it, um, and put it on a paper for us in a very easy-to-understand way. And I, I really appreciate that. And I hope if citizens have concerns about, you know, where our fire department is going, why there isn't a station where they, um, where we all would like to have their fourth station, right? But you're laying us on a path very well thought out in terms of fire, hiring firefighters, uh, EMTs, and the equipment we need so that when we do have the, the money, um, for the fourth, in, you know, station, we will be prepared for it. And, um, I really, really appreciate that. And if people are wondering about that, this is a great document. I'm sure you wouldn't mind sharing it with the public, um, I hope. Because, um, a, anybody should feel free to call you to look at that, look at this, because it, it really explains where we are and where we need to, need to be going to. Because, uh, we need the equipment to be safe. We can't have our fire engines going down the street with doors, uh, flying open. I did witness that happen one day, and thank heavens it wasn't a person that came flying out, it was a piece of equipment. So, um, you know, it, it, we need to, we're taking care of that. So thank you very much. And, um,
Yeah.
unless anybody has any other discussion, mayor, I'll make a motion, but I wanna get, I don't wanna overstep.
Okay, any other questions from council on this item? And our public, I don't see anything from public. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve resolution two twenty dash zero six four. Resolution to approve the purchase of a new fire engine from the Darley Fire Company. And I hope it's not another forty years before we purchase another one from them.
All right, uh, Mayor Protem?
I enthusiastically second.
Okay, we have a motion and an enthusiastic second. Uh, Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Oh, enthusiastically, yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thanks, chief. We're excited about this. And, uh, let's, as, um, Ms. Thompson said, just that information alone just really helps us to, it helps, it's a good guiding document now. We can really make sure that we're, we're staying on top of those things. So, uh, we'll move on to item ninety, resolution two zero dash zero six five. A resolution authorizing the transition of a per diem firefighter EMT position to a part-time firefighter position. And we'll go ahead and let Chief, um, Maxon continue.
All right, so in an effort, uh, to, to save some, some money here in the city, we'd like to take a per diem position. Uh, per diem is, we have around fifteen of them right now, and that allows us to fill in for vacations or we have special events. Those are typically the folks that we use. And a part-time position is working fifty percent of what a full-time position does. And so we would be taking a per diem position and making it a part-time position. It just means that this person is now gonna have a set schedule that they work one-half of what a full-time firefighter would. Um, the hourly rate is essentially the same. There's a little bit of holiday pay, that's a little bit different. But in the grand scheme of things, it's not that, you know, that big amount of money. But this also helps us to cut back on overtime. For example, this past weekend, um, we had somebody on overtime, um, and which is, which is common, but we were down to our, one of our last folks in the department, which was one of the captains. And, and that is, uh, for twenty-four hours overtime, you're, you're looking at, you know, I'm paying a per diem, uh, probably about fifteen to sixteen dollars an hour. That overtime rate is close to sixty dollars an hour for twenty-four hours. And so that's, that's where the cost savings comes in and doing some of these things, um, and why we're wanting to reclassify this position.
Okay, um, seems simple enough. I will see if there's any questions from council. Yeah, I have no mics on. I'll look at public. Um, again, nothing there. So if no further discussion on this item, what would council like to do? Uh, Ms. Duncan?
I would just like to say thank you, uh, Staff, uh, Maxon. Or i, if anyone heard his beginning of his presentation was to save the city money. So I move to approve resolution two zero dash zero six five. An approved transition of a per diem firefighter EMT position to a part-time firefighter EMT position.
Okay, and Mr. Applegate.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second for approval, Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, I think that's it for our normal agenda, I'm going to go ahead and go through correspondence, comments. And ex officio reports, I'll start with city manager, Scott Trainor, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I know you guys have seen way too much of me tonight, so I just have two quick things. Both of them were are were mentioned by Councilmember Thompson earlier, but I just wanted to. Add a little bit to both of them, number one is the trunk or treat, we've been having conversations, the initial thinking was we probably weren't going to be able to have that event. But we started having some conversations internally about the possibility of doing some sort of drive-through event. And so we're working on the logistics for something like that, to see if we can make that thing work. How we could make it work, et cetera, so I just wanted to give it the council a little bit of information on that. Because I think that that event could be actually a lot of fun, so we're working on that, and then the military banner program. Sharon, I might have missed this, did you mention that we're talking about expanding it to veterans?
I didn't, no, I just mentioned we were going to make some changes to it, so.
Okay, oh yeah, I I thought maybe I missed that, so just want to just throwing it out there for the council, just give you a heads up, but. We're working on that, but due to some items on the next council agenda, it'll probably be the first one in September. That will bring that back for us, so that's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mayor, a couple of items tonight, we've got some good news that came in today. Our engineering division and our Duckwood project were nominated. And actually won an award from the engineering news record. For best project on our Duckwood project, so. Kudos to Brandy and Ben Sheets and everyone, well, those are those two compile our. And make up our engineering division, but great news on them. As that was just announced today, so as I get further information, I'll bring that forward to the council. But our engineering division really has done, you know, yeoman's work the last couple of years on getting a lot of. Public Works project done, so that was great news, they were. Recognized for that work, also, I'm not sure, Paul, are you able to share share those pictures with council? The pictures that Paul is sharing right now, that's from Lindamood in our heritage area. I just want to keep this on the council's radar. We've received several complaints this week regarding the condition of Lindamood and you. As Paul runs through those, you can see the the kind of dire condition of these, the mayor's addressed this a couple of different times. But this is the time of year where we really are doing a lot of road construction in the city, so folks are pointing these out. We're having more and more of these complaints coming in from the neighborhoods. We attempted to address this with the roadway focus group, their tax initiative that they put forward to the citizens. And the council, of course, supported that. But we just want to keep it on everyone's radar, when we see these type of conditions in our neighborhoods. There's really not an easy fix to these, it's not something we can simply go out and do a dig out. And fix, these are almost reconstructions. So we are putting together a public works audit of specifically our neighborhood. Roads and the conditions, but we can expect those to be multi-multi-millions. And just to keep it on everyone's radar, we're going to need to address these eventually. As we just do not have the budgets right now for Bob McDonald and our streets division to address these. And Bob really does a great job, he does the best he can, he's very open, transparent and honest with the public. On the cost of these and that we've attempted those initiatives. But I just want to make sure we keep it on the radar, we've we've got several areas in the city and the neighborhoods that we've got. These type of road conditions and complaints coming in. So Mayor, that's all I've got, I don't know if you have anything to to comment on these, but we're going to keep trying and. And with what we've got, we're going to keep fixing those, and I appreciate Bob and and his guys' efforts this time of year to do these.
You know, and and the reality is, you know. And I go back to when people ask, I'm like, well, you know, the the voters. Said that that they didn't want the tax initiative, we we gave them the reasons why, that had a really good group of people who who worked hard on this. Citizens from across the the city who who, you know, are out there driving the roads just like the rest of us, and. You know, the the voters said no, and so. Either they feel like we have this money sitting, I know that a lot of people feel like we just have money sitting around that we can just. Spend on projects whenever we want, which is which isn't the reality, but the other part of that is. Is, you know, when we've had other initiatives that we wanted to push forward and. And they don't like those items and, you know, they go back to, well, we voted no once, and so we're going to stick. Hard and fast to that, if that's if that's the way we want to play that, and and I'm being a little gruff on this one, but it's it's very frustrating when. When, you know, we have people who want to scream and yell about certain things, but when when the vote comes out a certain way, that's that's. You know, that's the wish of the people, so we're going to go with it that way, apparently they feel like the roads are fine, even though the evidence has been presented and and is out there, so. You know. Regardless, we're going to keep moving forward with with what we have and and working hard and and when it comes to budget time, we. We as a council, we sit down and we try to make sure that every department gets what they need. Based on what we have, and so it's like we don't make imaginary money up somewhere, we don't have money sitting in coffers. We don't get paid by developers to do these things, actually developers are fighting us. That they don't have to give us money, so, you know, it's it's just one of those things, and and unfortunately for those roads who. Who do need that work and and the street crew who's working tirelessly and very hard, this is the reality that we live in in this community. And until, you know, the citizens, you know. Wanted to shoulder that burden rather than complain about it, we're going to, we're going to deal with these issues for for some time to come, so thanks, Todd, on on showing that and. And, you know, maybe we'll try again in the future, but again, you know, the the voters have spoken, so we're going to stick with that and and we'll keep moving forward. Unfortunately, for those who put in so much time and effort to to show the need and and show that we really needed that, but. We'll keep moving forward with that one, thanks for that, Troy Johnson, anything?
Nothing for me tonight, thanks.
Okay, thanks a lot. Chief Maxon, anything further from you?
Yes, I have two things, I just want to say that tomorrow at six PM here at Station One. We'll be having a penning ceremony for our newest fire captain, Ryan Torres. For anybody who wants to come to that, we're doing it outside, so we're doing, you know, social distancing. And then effective this this weekend, we'll be promoting Veronica Garrett. To fire lieutenant, and she will be the first female officer in this department in the hundred and seventeen year history. Her pending ceremony will be scheduled in the near future, but that's two very exciting things for us.
Okay, and you know what, congratulations to those two, they are very hardworking people. And I know Ryan has done a ton for this community in the time that he's been here, and and same with. Veronica as well, and just the work that they do for our department and for our citizens is is second to none, so they're very well, very well deserving. Accolades and and I'm definitely going to try to make it out there tomorrow. Ms. Martinez, do you have anything further?
No, nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Trilch.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I have nothing further this evening, thank you.
Awesome, and Paul, anything further from IT?
Nothing else to say, thank you.
Okay, and again, thanks to IT for helping with all this stuff going on and and making sure we're we're able to do this virtually, and of course, Ms. Huffman.
Nothing for me tonight, sir, thank you.
Did you want to mention the movie night in the park coming up?
Yes, we're very excited about the movie night in the park coming up, it is scheduled, well, it's to be scheduled, we actually have. We encourage reservations online, there's only so many people, as you know, that we can have there at the park. So we have our next movie night coming up here on the fourteenth. And honestly, I can't remember again what the movie is, I'll have to look that up.
It's Lion King, isn't it?
Lion King.
Perfect. So please, everybody to register online so that we have your contact information. And we don't have to ask for it there at the gate, and like I said, we are limited to attendees.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Huffman, and I think that's it for staff, if I miss anybody, please let me know. I'm going to go ahead and go through council super quickly, Ms. Duncan.
Okay, our census twenty twenty, residents have the opportunity to complete their surveys. Online, by phone or by mail. And census takers are also out and about in our area, so if someone comes knocking at your door. Please go to your door and answer, it may be someone very important. I can't stress enough the importance of filling out the census and providing an accurate count. Everyone counts that lives in your home, including the babies. Also, if you are seventeen years. And you turn eighteen before the November general election, you are eligible to cast primary ballots. So seventeen-year-olds can vote in Colorado's upcoming presidential primary election. It's a new state law that gives them the right to vote for the first time. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Applegate, sorry, I kind of lost my mind there.
Did you skip Mr. Geek?
Well, I'll go back to Mr. Geek, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I'd just like to mention something about the abundance of. Damage done to our roads here, they were built wrong, there's nothing we can do about that, but I was hoping that. Eventually, we can do something about this abundance of heavy trash trucks on all the roads constantly. I've been looking forward to that, coming back and see what we can do about it, that's all.
Okay, thank you, and so I'm, I got my little placard from the the thing here, I'm trying to figure out which way I'm going here, everything's all turned around. Mr. Geek, I'm sorry for skipping over you.
That's fine, I just would like to know if Chief Maxon needs somebody for a weekend or a twenty-four hour shift. I'll be more than happy to work for sixty dollars an hour.
He's staying silent on that one, so I don't know. Okay, anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, great, Ms. Estes.
I have nothing further.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Nothing further for me, thanks.
Ms. Thompson.
Yeah, we'd just like to remind everybody that Illinois is going to be closed Thursday, I think that is, Todd, correct me if that's wrong. For some railroad construction, so be patient when, you know, everybody is going to have to go on to Ohio. To get home in the evening, so just everybody be patient and. Also, just remind people hackers are alive and well out there, I had a friend that had her email hacked this week. So, you know, and then some people answered it. You know, your friend isn't going to send you an email that says, do you have an Amazon account? And unfortunately, some people believed the email, so. Some issue, you know, just they're alive and well out there, so when you open stuff, be careful, because Greg can probably attest, hackers don't take a break.
Okay.
They are twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, no breaks at all.
Right. Okay, thanks for that, the only other thing is as we move into next week. And our local school districts will be starting kids back, I just asked that everyone has patience with the the process. The progress of starting school again, and and as I keep telling everyone, and this is unprecedented, this isn't something that. Anybody knows anything about, we're we're learning this as we go, and it's 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 a fast-moving. Thing that that has affected everyone across the globe, and so, you know, I ask for patience when you go back to school and you're dealing with your teachers, and. You know what, they 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 want kids back in those buildings and and in their classrooms so they can teach. More than anybody else, because this that's that's their passion, that's their job, and that's what they want to do. And it's it's they, none of these teachers have gotten into this profession to teach online, and so it's their wish that they had kids in as well, so. Just I ask for patience and 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 helping these kids get back into school and getting some. Normal back to them is, you know, because this has been crazy for probably them even more for us, but. Just just be aware of that, we're going to have kids out and about again, get into school and those type of things, so. Just be wary of all that's going on as we move forward through COVID, so. I think that's it, our next meeting is going to be August twenty-fifth, we have no executive sessions. So I will adjourn our meeting, thank you for coming tonight and being a part of our city council meeting, take care.